Okay, at this time we'll open up the Garden Grove City Council meeting. Kathy, would you please call Raul?
Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Fawn.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Brobater.
Here. Okay, we had a closed, we did not have a closed session, so there's nothing to report on a closed session. And at this time, we will have the invocation by Susan Emery, and then the Pledge of Allegiance will be led to us by Chris Fong.
Dear God, we gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag and say a pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's my understanding that we have a presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Susan Emery to make the presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to recognize an extraordinary, dedicated woman who has spent close to a decade devotedly serving the local autism community. Would Julie Chau Deep please come forward? Garden Grove resident Julie Deep, speech-language pathologist and founder of OC Autism, has dedicated her life to providing free education, training, and guidance to individuals with autism and their families. Knowing firsthand the challenges and struggles of growing up with special needs, Julie has committed herself to raising public awareness in the Vietnamese, Korean, and Spanish-speaking communities. She received her Master's of Science degree from Loma Linda University in speech-language pathology and a minor in audiology. In addition, she received a postgraduate certificate in applied behavior analysis from National University. Julie started her Garden Grove career working for the Garden Grove Unified School District. She worked several years at the district, later opening a private practice, offering quality-intensive services to children with autism and development delays, as well as adults with strokes, brain injuries, and neurological disorders. During her practice, she realized that many children were not getting early identification and intervention for autism. Many parents in Garden Grove were unaware of local resources and their special education rights to advocate for services. Believing that every child deserves an equal opportunity to succeed and are entitled to quality services, Julie launched OC Autism, a nonprofit organization based in Garden Grove. OC Autism's mission is to ensure the highest standard of care for the community, especially minority families. Their website currently receives about 10,000 to 40,000 hits monthly, and with the help of local media support and their annual events, OC Autism is able to bring the community together to serve families and raise autism awareness. In November of 2013, Julie participated in the 10th anniversary of Orange County Walk Now for Autism Speaks, held at the Orange County Great Park. She was motivated to walk for her family and for the Vietnamese community. Julie is a mother, a wife, a businesswoman, and a community volunteer. She's passionate about her chosen profession and the families they serve. She hopes for a brighter future for children with special needs and has worked diligently to fulfill that dream. At this time, the mayor and the city council would like to present Julie with a crystal memento in recognition and appreciation for her distinguished service and efforts toward the local autism community. Congratulations, Julie.
(applause)
Thank you so much, especially for the Garden Grove City Council, for this prestigious recognition. As a resident of Garden Grove and as a businesswoman in Garden Grove, I'm very proud to be able to represent my community and also to bring so much more awareness to autism. I have a very small practice in Garden Grove, but I can't believe that OC Autism is number one in Orange County, serving all of Orange County and throughout our community. Most people think that OC Autism stands for Orange County autism, but to me, it stands for our community for autism, extending beyond Orange County. Because I am a bilingual Vietnamese pathologist, and I work as an expert witness, I'm pulled to out-of-state on special cases, and I even have families moving from Vietnam to come here for services. And with that gift, I think brings a much greater responsibility to serve. But more importantly, I cannot do this just by myself. OC Autism is with great committee that comes to help me. We have students from the local colleges that comes every week to serve the community. The reason we have so much traffic on our website is because it's about education, and I believe that if you educate parents and you empower parents, they're able to access early intensive therapy. Unfortunately, a lot of children do not get recognized and identified early for therapy. One of my biggest platforms is to make sure that early intervention comes before age two. And I think that's a number that, you know, everyone says, "Oh, they're too young to go to school. They're too young to make improvements." But for us, we're about prevention, and we don't want that burden to rest upon the school district. So if we can prevent, I think that that can help us, our community as a whole. So thank you again.
At this time, we'll open up oral communications. Raul Alvarez.
Oh, yes, we're definitely speaking up for the agency, too.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Raul Alvarez. I'm here from Cypress College, and we're here to talk about our Cypress College 39th Annual Americana Awards, which is on February 22, 2014. Thank you for the past support we've gotten from Garden Grove. Some folks are surprised to learn how many of our students come from Garden Grove. There are 16,000 students enrolled at Cypress College, and almost 1,000 of those students reside in Garden Grove, 956 to be, to be exact. Last spring, we did an award ceremony where we distributed about $100,000 in scholarships. 16 of the award recipients are students from Garden Grove, and they received a little over $8,000. Proceeds from our event, our Americana Awards, is what makes student support possible. We give the scholarships I mentioned in the spring. We give other scholarships at different times of the year, book loans, book grants, emergency grants, faculty grants. We award about a quarter of a million dollars each year for direct student support. And our event, again, is one of the primary means of raising money to do the work that we, that we do. Our Garden Grove citizens of the year, Bill and Sue Catlin, are not here tonight since on February the 11th, they're going to be recognized in a special manner by the, by the city. We didn't want to wait until February to come and tell you about our, our event, but I appreciate the acknowledgement that you are giving to the Catlins, very, very well deserved. Also with us tonight, I'm going to introduce Janelle Goges. She is with Southern California Edison, and she's chair of the Americana Awards, co-chair. And also with us is our chair of our Garden Grove City Committee, Pamela Shear, with Union Bank. Union Bank is our title sponsor and has been, this is the fourth of, fourth year that they've been our, our title sponsor. Another member of our committee is also here, Steve Jones. Where'd you go to school, Steve?
I went to Cypress College.
Well, imagine that, Cypress College.[867.81][867.81](laughter) Our Men of the Year are Cypress College alumni and former NBA standouts, Sven Nader and Mark Eaton, both of whom still hold NBA and/or ABA records for block shots and for rebounding. Our distinguished business award this year is going to go to Care Ambulance. They do a lot in, in all of our, our communities. In addition, early in the program, we're going to have a salute to first responders, police, fire, Red Cross, paramedics, other, other personnel. And we do want the city to participate in that. We do want to be able to introduce a couple of Garden Grove's first, first responders. I'm now going to have Janelle Goges say a few words about the, the event, and sure appreciate the chance to, to be here with you.
Thank you, Raul. Janelle was Southern California Edison, and I'm here to do the ask. I get to do the fun part. We are asking the city to see if you would sincerely consider sponsoring some sort of a table to help to represent the city of Garden Grove. If you consider a founder's level at 3,500 or a benefactor's level at 2,500, you sincerely will help us in the efforts of providing scholarships to students at Cypress College. Now, I won't ask you to do something that I haven't asked of my company. So, Southern California Edison recently submitted a grant to Cypress College for $25,000. That is money that's going directly back to the community and students that are from the city of Garden Grove. So if you consider this, a founder's table at 3,500, you would be investing $3.56 for each student that goes to Cypress College from the city of Garden Grove. If you were to consider a benefactor table, you'd be investing $2.56 per student from Garden Grove going to Cypress College. So we really hope that you consider that ask. Secondly, I hope that you enjoyed last year, and we're going to continue it this year. The city display boards. The city of La Palma, I'm sorry to Garden Grove, but they, they did reign in first place. We do have a certificate for honorable mention for the city of Garden Grove. Thank you for taking the time. This is an opportunity for you to let us know, let the community know, what makes Garden Grove so special? Why should people live? Why should people work? Why should people play in the city of Garden Grove? So it's your brag board. Secondly, a city basket. Help us to put together a basket where you have a collection of restaurants in Garden Grove and attractions in Garden Grove that can, we can use as a silent auction item to help to raise funds for Garden Grove. Finally, a mayor's package. Most coveted live auction item, one of the most that we had last year. We raised over $2,000 just by folks having the opportunity to have lunch with the mayor, lunch with the chief of police, fire department. All of those VIP accesses allow us to raise funds and give the community an opportunity, city manager, maybe city attorney, who knows what happens behind those closed doors. But that allows the community the opportunity to see things that they may not have the opportunity to do otherwise. So, again, thank you so much sincerely for your support with Cypress College. We hope to see you guys at Americana.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1086.18][1086.18](applause)
Welcome back. Happy New Year. Chúc mừng năm nay. Good to see everybody again. Now, I hate to start off on sort of a sour note, but unfortunately, there are storm clouds brewing, and I've got to address something. I'm here tonight to speak about the proposed development that is coming to Main Street Garden Grove by the Sheldon Group. This, as you're aware, is a, has been a closed-session topic that the public, most people in the city of Garden Grove probably don't know about, and it kind of concerns me because it seems like it's something that's coming really fast, headed our way like a tidal wave, and it's going to be really hard to stop without the cooperation and consideration of the city council. This coming Thursday night, I believe, is the Planning Commission meeting where I'll also be speaking about this project, but I wanted to get my foot in the door ahead of time with you all and hopefully let you know how some of the residents feel about this. We are, you know, the core people of the city here. We live here, we play here, we spend our money here, we use Edison phone bills and And anyways, we, we have a, something to say about this. Now, from what we understand, because we don't have all of the information, there's going to be a condominium complex coming in the parking lot between Main Street and the Home Depot. That is our last free parking in the downtown area. This is where people park when they come to downtown. Should that be removed, we will not have parking, and we will not have customers. Our shop owners and merchants will be wondering, where did all their customers go? They went to other cities because they couldn't park here. We've got a lot of restaurants down there that each Friday night, that whole parking lot is full. We've got the car show that brings in tons of people. Now granted, during the weekdays, it's not always full, but on the weekends, it certainly is. As a nearby resident, I can attest to this, and I'm down there. Now, I'm lucky enough where I can walk there, but other people from other cities can't do that. So, I think that it's something that needs to be addressed. I think that the public needs to understand that this is possibly coming our way, or is coming our way, and it's not like they were notified and told about it. It's not on the billboards, it's not on the electric marquee, it's not in the water bill. It's in closed session. It's behind closed doors, it's not readily available information. So people out there in the city, please plan on attending the Planning Commission if you're at all concerned about losing your last bit of free public parking. This is our parking lot for our city. I understand it's nice to have more income, you know, tax dollars from the condos, but consider this, if you're going to build, if, if the Sheldon Group gets their way and they do get their condo complex, it would be very responsible for the city to create a very large parking structure, either underground or above ground, to allow us to still go to downtown. We've got the whole reimagine Garden Grove thing coming, and it hints, the latest questionnaire was, what kind of housing do you want downtown? So they're sort of hinting at, hey, we've got some new housing coming. Well, the problem with these condo complexes is oftentimes, there's not enough public parking, or parking for even their residents. We seem to grant these complexes the very bare minimum amount of spots, oftentimes leaving them no guest parking at all, forcing them to park in our neighborhoods or circle the block looking for parking spots over and over. They might end up in the Home Depot parking lot, that Costco disaster of a parking lot. So these are just things that I want you to consider. When it comes up to vote in the very near future, please consider voting on the side of your residents and what's best for them and our community, rather than just for a developer. Sorry to breed downer right off the bat. Happy New Year, and Chris, happy birthday. Chúc mừng năm nay. Thank you.[1387.86][1387.86](applause)
Scott Weimer.
My name's Scott Weimer, and I own a business and I own property over on Main Street. I'm also an officer with the Garden Grove Downtown Business Association. And all I can say is, here we go again. And you'd think that after what happened last time, that staff would at least have a clue that the majority of business and property owners over there on Main Street are, are not interested, this time around, which would be the third time around, in forfeiting our parking lot for the benefit of a developer, or for bringing in a large, a large high-density, low-income urban infill project, as if we need another one. And that confuses us, since it has come to our attention that in fact, the Sheldon Project is back on the drawing board. And what confuses us even more is the fact that we were not formally noticed or even invited to the hearing at the Planning Commission meeting, of which is scheduled next Thursday night, when staff will be asking the commissioners to okay the outright sale, the fee simple sale, of the parking lot to a public relations firm. You're not required to provide us, the property owners, within a 500-foot radius of the project area, any kind of, any kind of notice that this hearing's going down? You haven't even invited us. You haven't even told us that this project is rearing its head again, seven years later. We got the news, well, I don't have time for that, I got to get through here. For any of you who have ever run a private business, you know how important parking is. It's the lifeblood of our businesses, and without it, it's just like putting a gun to our head. And if you restrict it even further, particularly during the one- or two-year time period that this project is going to be built, there will be no parking on the west side. That'll be just like pulling the trigger to a lot of these, to a lot of these businesses that are barely surviving now. And as Mr. McIntosh indicated, that parking lot on big, busy weekends is full and can't be sacrificed. Most of you know, this particular issue, condo issue goes back a few years, and I'm sure that at least a few of you are familiar with the history. Actually, it's pretty simple. We at the Downtown Business Association were first approached by the city with this idea back in 2002. Fortunately, with the sitting, sitting council at that time, they honored our wishes of not forfeiting our parking lot for the implementation of another high-density project. Unfortunately, however, the second time that this came up in 2006, the city did exactly the opposite, and as you recall, fought us tooth and nail all the way along. Now, I realize that with the level of opposition that we did in fact put up this time, or last time, that you probably would not want to involve us or invite us in any way, shape, or form to anything that has to do with, with, with putting in another project over there. And I think you guys made that very clear also, when at least a couple of you on this current council, in a subsequent and retaliatory action to our go-around last time, voted to abolish, completely abolished, the parking district in its entirety. That was a, that was a public benefit special district, of which had been in place for over 50 years, before this city was even incorporated. And it was, it was a very useful and purposeful district also, originally providing the service of acquiring parking lots, of which those, those individuals on Main Street in the Downtown Business Association in the 1950s actually purchased most of those lots with their own monies at that time, also. Well, your lawyers did ultimately prevail, technically at least, although I have to think not in a manner that would make us, as the citizens of Garden Grove, very proud. The city ended up, as you might recall, being the poster child for the Grand Jury's 2012 Redevelopment Report on How Not to Run a Redevelopment Project. For those of you who did not read it, the report cited in the pursuit of the Sheldon Project, our city failed to address citizen concerns particularly pertaining to the forfeiture of the parking lot, and recommended that in the future, that the city should negotiate with the Downtown Business Association in order to come to an agreement on the scope of any subsequent condo projects, most particularly addressing the number of convenient parking spaces needed in order to meet the demands of the downtown merchants. I would have liked to have believed that that in itself would have been enough to have compelled you guys to change your modus operandi, but now, all of a sudden, out of nowhere, we find that new meetings have been held between staff, yourselves, and Sheldon Public Relations. As Mr. McIntosh indicated, those have been in closed sessions, and to once again discuss the selling of our parking lot out from underneath us, again, with no request for proposal from competing developers, no plans, no environmental impact report, no public disclosures of any kind, unless, of course, these things actually do exist, but we just don't know them, and you haven't shown them to us. Allow me to make a suggestion. Let's do it differently this time, folks. We all know that this last project design was a horrible monstrosity. Who knows, we might even like the new project. I've been told that it's been scaled down significantly and is of a completely different design, but we'll never know unless we see it and unless somebody shows it to us. One minute, Mr. Mayor, please. I would therefore implore you, from this point on, to adopt a spirit of transparency, cooperation, and coordination between us and staff regarding this crucial and divisive issue. An attitude that would encourage collaboration rather than condemnation, transparency over uncertainty, and full disclosure in every way. I would also ask that any further city and staff meetings, discussions, and proceedings and hearings relating to this project be tabled until the Main Street Commission, the Downtown Business Association, and of course, the public is in receipt of and has an adequate time to review and respond to all the pertinent and applicable plans, renderings, variances, ERR reports, price terms, and developer entitlements. I guess what I'm saying is, let's try it a little bit different this time. Perhaps we could work together.
Okay, you've really done it over. Please, wrap it up.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Will you please think about it?
You know, some of the things you said really sort of irritating.
Ask me, Mr. Mayor.
Not that I'm with this project or anything else, but you said in my office, and we talked about things that could be done on Main Street, at least I was talking about things I think could be done on Main Street, and I mentioned this to you. I talked to you about this. I talked to you about this. So, it wasn't coming from nowhere. Now, I agree sort of with some of the things you're saying. And then telling us that the, how to run a redevelopment district. I'll tell you something, the city of Garden Grove run a redevelopment district better than any city in the state of California.
Well, perhaps the Main Street project was an exception to the rule. The Grand Jury certainly took objection to it.
2002, I was on this council, and I do not remember whether I voted for it or against it, but I got a feeling it was against it. In 2004, I was not here. Now, getting us all irritated and upset is not a way to win this. Winning this is by coming back and saying, let's work together to see what we can make it work or may it not work.
We tried that last time, sir.
Well, I wasn't here to see that, so you've got a whole five different people here. Why don't you try it this time to see where we're going? I do believe that...
Are you telling me that the third time might be a charm?
Maybe.
I'll believe it when I see it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and community members. My name is Camille Cornell, and I am a health educator with Community Service Programs Project Path. We are an alcohol and drug prevention project funded through the Orange County Healthcare Agency. For the past two years, we have been working in the city of Garden Grove to reduce alcohol and other drug impaired driving. I have provided some packets for you on some of the scope of our work that we do here in the city. One of our main components of our project is conducting a mass media campaign to raise awareness of the consequences of driving under the influence. Recently, we collaborated with the Garden Grove Police Department and the Office of Community Relations to conduct a city-wide DUI prevention campaign during the 2013 holiday season. Tonight, we would like to recognize Sergeant Jim Fisher and the Garden Grove Police Department's Traffic Unit for all of their DUI enforcement efforts during the month of December. While the rest of us were out celebrating with our family and friends, they dedicated all of their nights, weekends, and holidays to make sure that our city streets were safe during the holiday season. They worked countless checkpoints and saturation patrols throughout the month to educate the community and apprehend impaired drivers, and were fortunate to make 50 DUI arrests during the month of December. We would also like to recognize Anna Polito and her staff at the Office of Community Relations. With their help, we were able to display our Choose Your Ride Wisely, Don't Drink and Drive media campaign on freeway signs, city banners, and various media outlets. Lastly, we would like to recognize those who participated in our sticker shot campaign, including council member Chris Beard, 7-Eleven, and the Garden Grove Drug Free Coalition, and the youth group from St. Columban Catholic Church. On behalf of Community Service Programs Project Path, we thank you for making Garden Grove a safer city for the residents.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and citizens of Garden Grove. I settled in Garden Grove 35 years ago, and because it was a quaint little village, and in many respects, it still is a village. Unfortunately, something that I have noticed in recent years is a sort of a physical trashing of the city, mostly because of signs. Signs for discos and bands and all sorts of expos that are kind of undesirable, mostly, I think, they are signs for yard sales, garage sales. There was a time when people stuck to their three yard sales a year. Now, we have yard sale signs that stay up almost a year, yard sales that are almost perpetual every single week. So, you know, this in certain neighborhoods is a certain trashing. It's urban blight, quite frankly. Most recently, we've had just about every single utility pole and tree in Garden Grove plastered with lost dog signs. I'm sure everybody must have seen those. Those disappeared, and then we had a second bunch of lost dog signs. You know, there must be an ordinance against this, and we really need to do something about signs that stay up perpetually, especially yard sale signs and even campaign signs sometimes. Another thing that concerns me also is the number of vinyl banners that we see, mostly within a couple of hundred yards of the 22 freeway, we see them attached to public fences. They're nearly always connected to, you know, nail spars, discos, et cetera. One which I found very offensive was, there's a school for disadvantaged children, on Brookers, very close to the freeway. There was actually a sign for breast enhancement there, which I thought was totally inappropriate. Unfortunately, most of these vinyl banners are not businesses in Garden Grove. They are businesses in Westminster. What is even worse, I think, is the fact that most of these signs are in a foreign language. He's not looking at me. So, you know, we really need to clean up the city, I think, get rid of all these trashy signs. If people have a yard sale, I hope the citizens would take them down again afterwards. I hope that Public Works will take down these vinyl banners, for instance, because they are a blight on our community. And like I say, the city is still a nice village to live in. I think there's been a lot of improvements, but one of the things that really irks me is the fact that we are trashing it with paper and vinyl and all sorts of garbage. The other thing is that it affects our property values. Urban blight always sends down the value of properties. So, I hope the city has some teeth to do something about it. That's all I have tonight. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. As chairman of the Main Street Commission, I share the concerns about losing the parking on the west side of Main Street. There are so many people that come to Main Street to participate in events and to visit our shops and our restaurants, and parking is an extreme issue for them. So, please, see if we can come up with some kind of a compromise that will allow more parking for people if they have to leave that area up to condominiums. Now, one thing that occurred last Saturday was an event at the Senior Center, and that was a memorial to a 15-year employee of the city of Garden Grove. Jackie McIntosh passed away. She was remembered by so many people that visit the Senior Center, and I would like, if you may, to close this meeting in honor of Jackie McIntosh. There's also another person that I'd like to be considered. Claude Cook, and his last name is spelled K-O-C-H. A longtime member of our post in Westminster on Beach Boulevard, the American Legion, passed away recently. We all enjoyed Claude going into song every time the herbs struck him with the old songs like "Over There," "Pack Your Troubles in Your Old Kit Bag." He loved to sing, and he didn't talk much about his experiences in World War II. But Claude was on a hospital ship on December 7th, 1941. He and some buddies were on the fantail of that ship when they saw three Japanese planes diving on it. Now, this was a hospital ship, clearly marked with large red crosses. The planes kept approaching, and three of them figured, this is it, we've had it. But at the last moment, one plane veered off to the right, another veered off to the left, and the last plane climbed and went straight over the ship, just missing the mast, but they did recognize the Red Cross. And no one will ever know how many of the wounded at Pearl Harbor survived because of that hospital ship. So, if you would, Mr. Mayor, also close this meeting in honor of Claude Cook. Thank you, and I salute you, Claude.
Laura Nguyen.
My name is Laura Nguyen, and I'm an RN Team Supervisor with the American Red Cross. And I'm just here today to let everybody know to come and join me Thursday in support of the Vietnam War Museum of American Foundation. I would like to share my story about my family and my experiences of the Red Cross, and I'd really appreciate it if I could get the support of the city and the people. It will be Thursday, January 16th, 2014, at 6 o'clock. It's gonna be at the Courtyard Center, 12732 Main Street in Garden Grove. I hope the city and everyone will come and support the museum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Chris. I will also leave the flyers outside for anybody who'd like to come. Thanks.
Thank you again. Councilmember comments, and if anyone wants to speak on anything that was said? Well, I do. I mean, in 2004, there was a disaster in this city over that parking lot being built upon. And I don't see why we're lining ourselves up for another disaster from the standpoint of not doing it correctly. I think that before it does go to the Planning Commission, there ought to be some kind of meetings on it. There ought to be pictures of it somewhere, whatever it is going to be built, how many units it is, all the information should be out there. And I think we ought to at least maybe go through the, all the participants in the Main Street and let them know that it's happening. I'd like to pull it off the, I'd like to pull it off the agenda at the Planning Commission for two weeks at least, so people can see what it is and what it is, what's gonna be, and see how we can do it. Is that doable?
Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor, and the item that's actually going to Planning Commission is more of a procedural. It's a finding that the general plan is in conformance. It is not, in fact, a project. However, I do concur that before any action is taken by a public body, whether it's City Council or Planning Commission, the intent was that we would have several, what we call neighborhood meetings, whether it's with the Downtown Business Association or a general information meeting. So, that has always been the intent, and we certainly plan to do that. And the item, again, before the Planning Commission, and we will pull it, was primarily a procedural, it was not the project itself, but to avoid any suspicion that this thing is being proposed or processed quickly, we will hold off on that action and make sure that we have these neighborhood meetings first.
Okay, and let me say something to the people that were going to come to the Planning Commission. Come to the other speaker, this young lady had Thursday night at the same time, so we expect to see you all there. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go on. Okay, what is next here? Reorganization of the City Council?
Selecting Mayor Protem.
Can I ask you a question? Mayor Protem currently, are you satisfied with doing the job? Do you want to continue doing?
My honor.
It's, I think you've done an excellent job, and I'd like to nominate or propose or recommend that she continue on.
Do I hear a second?
Yes, second.
Call for the vote.
Thank you.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Is there any other reorganization that needs to be done on this?
None at the council level. You do have that on the agency, however.
Okay, very good. Okay, let's go to consent items.
I'm sorry, we need to recess and go to the agency.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll call to order the January 14th meeting of the Garden Grove Accessory Agency for Community Development. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater.
Here.
Member Nguyen.
Here.
Member Fawn.
Here.
Vice Chair Beard.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Here.
Are we actually adjourned, or are we doing that after?
No, we do not have a closed session item tonight.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So, you go right to...
Yeah, we've already done oral communications together with City Council, so reorganization and selection of, I guess, chair and vice chair or whatever.
Correct.
Yeah.
Who is the vice chair?
That would be me, Chris.
Well, I didn't do a very good job last year, I mean...
What?
Okay, I move we leave the same two fellows there.
Yes, I second that, but may I add that with the change in the agency, and we no longer have the agency, and now there's such an agency, I wanted to commend Councilmember Jones for all the work that he has put in to make all the projects move along with staff, well, mainly staff did a lot of work, but Councilmember Jones was very instrumental in meeting with many public officials and as well as other agencies to get this going, and we want to thank Councilmember Jones for staying on the agency.
I made a motion, we have a second.
Call the vote.
Do we have a second? Somebody say second.
That way.
Okay.
I would say.
Good girl.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Votes for chair and vice chair together, right?
Right.
Okay. Consent items, just approval of the warrants.
To move.
Second, call the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
We have no hearings and no items for consideration, so any other matters from members? I'll just say, thank you, Deena, for the kind words and from being on this board and also on the Oversight Committee, which is sort of another step in the process, I've gotten to observe our staff work very diligently and work very hard in the last several years, going through some very rocky times and uncertain times within this space, and just seen how they've performed and just really, really stuck with it, and with a ton of persistence and a ton of intelligence behind their approach, that they've actually made a lot of these projects that were in danger of going away, and now we're gonna still see them come through. So, big kudos to staff for all their hard work on redevelopment in the last couple of years. With that, we're adjourned back to City Council.
Okay, at this time, we'll reconvene the City Council, and we will go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that items 5A through 5C be acted unsimultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a council member.
Entertainer motion.
Move the consent items.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, let's go to items for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, you have two items under one project. It's a well project out on the east, west end of town, and Bill Murray is here to give a staff report on these items.
Thank you, Mr. Fortell, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, council is being asked to authorize a contract with Arnez Engineering Contractors Incorporated for the rehabilitation of the West Garden Grove well and booster pump station for almost $3.2 million. The well facility is located on Chapman, east of Knott. The existing facility was constructed in 1970 and is at the end of its design life. The current facility has experienced increased maintenance and reduced output. The facility is the primary water source for the west side of Garden Grove and was identified as a top priority in the city's water master plan. This project will provide all new equipment within the pump house and including a new roof for the block pump house. Staff received and opened eight bids in November... including a new roof for the block pump house. Staff received and opened eight bids in November of last year and determined that Arnez Engineering Contractors was the lowest responsible bidder. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work by March and should be complete by the end of the year. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with water funds. And as a second part of this award, we are also requiring that council consider the award of a contract to provide construction inspection services for that, this very project. And staff received proposals from two qualified firms and rated both firms with respect to their experience and specific services offered. Then we negotiated a contract with the highest rated firm. Somas Engineering was determined to be the most qualified and offered the higher service as rated by the city staff for a cost of just over $240,000. Staff is recommending that an inspection services contract be awarded tonight and to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. This concludes staff's report.
Any questions from staff?
Just a brief question, Bill. As far as, I may have missed, as far as the payment plan for the work, is it gonna be staggered out in installments as based on performance and completion of work?
Yes. Each item of work will be billed to the city, and we inspect it, or if it's just delivered to the site, then we can pay on that per specifications.
Okay, so it's not like a lump sum?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Question related to completion construction date? December, end of this year?
It'll be the end of 2014.
Will there be any impact on traffic or anything related to it?
This won't be minor compared to what we usually do.
Okay. And have we done business with Arnez, Arnas before?
They were, they're, no, not specifically, but we reviewed all of their references, and they've checked out.
Okay. Thank you.
Entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Let's go to eight, 2A. Eight, A2.
Oh, they're both-
Oh, they're, two other, okay.
Okay, so it's both items are, have been voted on.
Chris?
Okay, well, I want to wish Councilman Chris Fawn a happy birthday. Today's the actual day, correct?
Yes.
Makes you even happier, huh?
He's here.
Yeah, yeah. That's dedication. That's commitment. Happy birthday to you.
Thanks.
And that's a good note. And I want to extend my condolences again to Steve Jones for the loss of your father. And I know how hard that can be, especially at that time of year, so my condolences to you and your family. I want to let everyone know that the Sister City students are coming into Garden Grove this Saturday, and they'll be here for a week to nine days. And they'll be put up with host families. It's 10 students coming from overseas. We reciprocate. We send students over there. We interview them. So those who see Garden Grove, the sites of Southern California, it's a great exchange program, educational program for them. So I want to welcome the students coming in. And if anybody's ever interested in finding out more about the Garden Grove Sister City Association, or how you may donate or contribute, or be a host family, it's on Garden Grove, GGsistercity.org. So I want to welcome them to our great city. And I want to wish everyone a happy new year. I hope everyone had a good holiday season. Wish the best for a great, healthy, prosperous new year ahead for all the citizens. And one other thing of business is the drop boxes, charity drop boxes. I had a question. Something came up recently at my end of town. We became aware of it. So is the city looking into charitable donation, those boxes that we see in shopping centers and such?
Staff has been looking at this because we've had complaints about dumping where the charitable boxes are located in commercial centers. So we have been exploring the option of putting an ordinance together which would prohibit them or allow them only in select locations. So I think that will be coming forward in the next couple of months or so.
Great. Look forward to seeing that. Thank you. That's it. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to ask the mayor to close the meeting in honor and memory of Dr. Richard G. Jones. He has dedicated his life to improving people's health and lives. And he's been serving Garden Grove for many years and raises family here. And one of his children is, wait, hold on. You're the only child. No, one of his children is Councilmember Jones, and I want to send my condolences to your family, Councilmember Jones. Second, I'd like to say happy birthday to Councilmember Fawn, and thank you for your beautiful wedding pictures. You both looked beautiful that day. And I all wanted to remind everyone to go to the Thursday event that Ms. Nguyen from the Red Cross will be there as the speaker. And as one of the refugees, we have many stories to tell. And I remember go to motivational seminars where you pay hundreds of dollars to get motivated, and they would have stories like that. So in this instance, it's very cheap, and it's going to be very motivational. I can attest to that. And fourthly, as one of the people who always pay attention to signs, I know one of the speakers was concerned about signs because we have campaign signs every two years. And I do know that the staff in Garden Grove pay very close attention to those, and they are all gone eventually. We have a very big city, so it's gonna take time for them, and maybe they'll need a little help to locate where they are. And they'll pay attention to that. And that's it, and wish everyone a happy new year.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you, sir. Steve, our condolences. I was very impressed to see that your father is also an Army veteran. Wow. As far as for us, we're very thankful. Today's my birthday. I have closed out my 30s. Gonna hit the 4-0 now. And Cindy and I were hoping to start our family soon. So we're talking last night, and I was like, oh, my gosh, finally I have to be more responsible now. So I'm looking forward to that. And I just thank you so much, and hope everyone have a great new year. And the Lunar New Year is coming up here at the end of the month, so I hope you can join us for that. And this weekend, on Saturday, we're actually having our delayed Atlantis Winter Fest at 4:00. So if you have any young ones or young at heart, come out to Winter Fest at Atlantis at 4:00 this Saturday.
Thank you. Just like to say happy birthday to Councilmember Fawn. And then just one small comment on the project behind Main Street that was mentioned earlier. So I was surprised, I had heard some buzz about this coming forward, but I was surprised to hear and a little shocked to hear that it was coming to Planning Commission next week. So I'm glad to hear that it's just, that we're pulling it and that this thing can slow down a little bit, especially in light of all the hard work and effort that our planning staff has put into this whole reimagine downtown GG plan in the last year or so, with an underlying goal of really trying to get community involvement and community support to help shape the vision and not come across like the city's trying to jam something through. So I like the thought of slowing this down and getting interactive with it and letting people have a chance to say what they want to say.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, I want to wish you a happy birthday, and now you're gonna be more responsible. Does that mean that you used to be irresponsible?
(laughing) It's impressive, Mayor.
Anyway, I'd like to say that, that my feelings go out to Steve and his family. Dr. Jones was a great guy. I was surprised to see that at the funeral that he was in the Army, and he was wearing a 5th Army patch. I wore a 5th Army patch for about six months that while I was in the Army. And so I checked the years out to see where he was there, but he was there before me. So anyway, anyway, good luck to you, and I hope that, I hope you, everything goes well for you. Also like to talk about Jackie McIntosh. She was a member of our staff, and she was, worked in the Senior Center, and I understand she was dynamite in the Senior Center. And everything was, you go to Jackie to resolve everything and to fix everything. So I guess we're gonna miss her also. It's not a good thing to keep losing everybody. I don't know Mr. Claude Cook, but we will close the meeting in all three of their names and, and hope that we do close meetings in other people's names soon. I just, this is a part I don't like doing. So anyway, at this time, we will adjourn, and we will come back on, tell me somebody, 28th of January at 6:30 PM. Thank you very much.
And we have cake.
We have cake. In fact, we have great cake tonight.
Please, Steve.